Ms. Garza?
Yes, sir.
Could you please call the floor?
Sure. Chairman Di Maria?
Here.
Vice Chairman Albrecht?
Here.
Mr. Bushnell? Ms. Kiefer?
Here.
Ms. Seiberg?
Here.
Ms. Sebeski?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Alonso? Ms. Maddick?
Here.
Thank you. Did you do it okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. Additions or deletions to the agenda? Dr. McQuark?
We have a student transfer request, and a student non-resident request, and a personnel agenda that have to be added to the consent agenda.
Thank you. Superintendent's announcements and spotlights?
Yes, we have some tonight.
Mrs. Rafford?
Thank you, Chairman Di Maria. Yes, actually, you and the superintendent can join us down here to my left if you don't mind. Thank you to other school board members. Good evening to you and to those who are with us tonight. I bring you greetings on behalf of the Communications Office. We are pleased to have a couple of presentations for this evening, but we want to start off with a check presentation, which is awesome. Tonight, we are excited to share information regarding a great thing that has happened for Manassas City Schools. Last year, Mrs. Teresa Coats Ellis, who is the president of the Bull Run Rotary, worked with Osborne High School guitar teacher Stacy Rubach in preparing a $2,500 grant proposal for the purchase of music instruments at Osborne High School. The grant was approved, which is certainly exciting, but that is not all. The Bull Run Rotary Club decided to match the grant with an additional $2,500. So because of this, the MCPS Music Department will receive $5,000 for the purchase of instruments for the band and orchestra programs in grades 5 through 12. Mrs. Ellis, along with members of the Rotary, are here tonight to present the check to the school division. Those representing Manassas City Public Schools also include Carol Hart, who is the coordinator of the Fine Arts Program for the Division, along with teachers in the program, Makisha Kosik, Bill Stevens, Marty Garfield Levine, and Keith Wilfinger. So if Ms. Ellis could come forward and she can introduce those that are with her, the members of the school division, if you would come on down. You might want to come over to the mic so we can hear you. Yep. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. Shall you point this way? I also want to mention Stacy Rubach. Somebody might have to step up a little bit. That's okay.
Thank you.
Do it like this. Do it like that. How about that? Pam Byers, who is in our Rotary. She brought Stacy Rubach to our Rotary, and she did a great presentation for the instrument need at Metz and Osborne. So I still want to thank her for that. We are the Bull Run Rotary Club. Our members today are...
Pamela Byers.
Dan Reddick.
Gary Ullman.
Patrick Cloud.
Elaine Sal.
Christopher Zorn.
Craig Johnson.
And we also want to thank the Manassas City Public Schools Music Department that are here tonight.
Martin Garfield.
Phil Seitz.
Keep looking.
Thank you for coming. The Bull Run Rotary, we are a service organization. We're one of the oldest service organizations in the world. We do meet every Tuesday morning at City Tavern at 7:00 a.m., 7:30 a.m. We're very early, the early birds of the community. But we do a lot of fundraising and service projects for our community. So we're very happy to have this opportunity to present this $5,000 grant that was matched by our $2,500 grant and $2,500 matched by our club for instruments. And what I'm told is the plan is piccolo, clarinet, euphonium, two baritones, and that was for Osborne. So Metz still has to give their less, but I'm sure it's going to be similar. Yeah. So, thank you for that. And... And thank you, Dr. McQuark and school board, for having us here tonight. Thank you. Ms. Ellis and to the Rotary Club, we just want to say that we're very privileged and elated to accept this generous donation on behalf of our students because we know it's going to be a great benefit to our Fine Arts Program. So thank you so much. Okay. Well, the Virginia School Boards Association, or VSBA, has recognized the members of the School Board of the City of Manassas and our clerk with the VSBA Academy Awards. The VSBA Academy serves as a professional development program for school board members and recognizes them for their participation in VSBA meetings, conferences, board development, and training, and for their active role or involvement in the association. Board members earn award credits based on participation from July 1st to June 30th of each year. Awards are issued for five different levels: recognition, achievement, excellence, honor, and distinction. So awards for the 2015-16 school year were given as follows. Mr. Bushnell and Lee Miller, Award of Recognition; Ms. Kiefer and Mr. Williams, Award of Achievement; Mr. Di Maria, Award of Honor; and Mr. Albrecht, Mrs. Sebeski and Dr. McQuark, Award of Distinction. I would like to note that Ms. Seiberg and Ms. Garza both began with the board this school year, so they didn't qualify for the Academy Awards this time around, but we certainly appreciate what they've contributed thus far. So, thank you. I think it's important for our community to understand that just as we do professional development and our roles in the school system, our board is steadily doing the same thing to be effective in how you serve the community. So, thank you all for everything that you do. And that concludes our announcements and spotlights for tonight.
Thank you. I'd like to say on those awards, none of us do this for this award. I've been, I guess this would be my 11th year. I've been on the board 10 years, and this is as high as I get. Ms. Sebeski, Ms. Albrecht, how many years have you gotten the Honor of Distinction?
I think 14 or 15.
Every year?
Every year.
Thank you very much. It's a pain in the butt, and I'm very thankful that you all do that. Okay. Board committee reports. Academics, Mr. Williams?
No report.
Educations, Mr. Albrecht?
Yeah, real quick, we had a committee meeting on the 4th of October. At a future board meeting, staff will present a potential proposal regarding cell phones. And also, as everybody knows, New Baldwin around the corner. We are still on schedule for a January occupancy in school start.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Sebeski, policy?
No report.
Thank you. Mr. Albrecht, finance?
Just real quick, the first budget cycle meeting will be this Thursday, in two days, over at its central office. So, the budget calendar's up and starting.
Wonderful. It's just so exciting. Once again, everybody sits over there. Okay. And no personnel committee. Board member comments. Ms. Maddick, we're going to start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I know, I just had a brief comment. Last week was OHS's Homecoming Week, Spirit Week, and it went off great. I think everyone had a great time at homecoming, so I would just like to thank all the staff and everyone that helped put it together. So, thank you to all of those for your guys' time and giving up your Saturday night so we could really have a great time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Seiberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A thank you to the Bull Run Rotary for your generous donation. And I wanted to echo the thoughts about homecoming. Thanks to all the Eagles out there showing their spirit and the activities that you plan. It really helps to build community spirit and school spirit. Thanks to Ms. Bennor, the SCA, staff, students, and alumni that led these efforts. And also, congratulations on the great effort for the Pink Out, the Pink Out efforts. It shows that you care, and it brings awareness to the importance of research, exams, diagnosis, and a cure someday for breast cancer. October is Bullying Prevention Month. Looking forward to hearing more with the presentation this evening. And this week is also National School Lunch Week. It's a week-long celebration of the school lunch program. It was created by President John F. Kennedy in 1962 to spread the message that we're serving healthy and tasty lunch at school. This week at Metz Middle School, many of our school board members are helping to serve the students and offer samples of food. Monday, it was Chicken Alfredo. And we're talking with students and staff. And I just want to say thank you to the Metz staff for the warm welcome and being so positive. I'll see you again tomorrow at lunch. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kiefer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to start off tonight by just thinking about the victims of Hurricane Matthew. It's quite a thing going on in the world around us, so I didn't want to lose sight of reality in the midst of everything else we're dealing with. I want to echo Mrs. Seiberg. We had a great time in the cafeteria yesterday, and we were rocking those hairnets like nobody's business. So, there are pictures, and there is evidence. So, thank you for having us. It was really great to talk with the staff. It was great to mingle with the kids and just see what it's all about. So it's nice to kind of roll up our sleeves and do that kind of fun stuff. This is also, I believe, National Principals Month, so it's something we often don't hear about, but I know we've got a couple here tonight. So, thank you for all that you do. And to those who are watching or not here with us, thank you. It's not easy to run a building and to also have a personal life in the midst of all that. So we thank you for everything you do for our kids and for all of us. And to our assistant principals as well. I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize you. And also, just lastly, it's also national. There's a lot of national things going on this month. National School Bus Safety Week. And I guess the theme is your stop on red, which I thought was ironic because we just put stopbar cameras on all of our buses. So I'm pleased to see Manassas City doing those things. And just remember, stop when you see those school buses. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everybody. It's kind of weird looking that way. I'll try to do that. Thanks to Ms. Ellis, Ms. Rubach, and the Bull Run Rotary Club for contributing to our schools. What they did was essential community is, and they're going to make our music program better by their contribution. So we thank them for their efforts. Congratulations to OHS students, staff, and family for a great homecoming week, and Principal Bennor especially. I heard that the pep rally, the dance, and other activities were amazing. That's an exact quote. And I was happy to catch up with the members of OHS alumni at the football game. I saw at least 10 students from this past June who graduated the game, and I feel they're rocking their college stuff. So it was cool to see them as well. It was very nice. And I think I saw the entire OHS administrative staff and all the officers at the game when I walked around. So that's to be commended. Every school doesn't do that in every special community. So thanks to you all for being there, supporting our staff and our kids and our students, our community. Thanks to the OHS alumni association for hosting festivities at Metz prior to the game. Hope it's going to become an annual tradition. Last week, as Faith knows, Osborne hosted a district children competition, which I attended. It was my first children competition ever. Let me bring it on. It's kind of cool. Faith and the members in the team did a great job, and the young man in the team did a great job as well. And it was kind of interesting to see how they compete. I'm used to sports. It's sport. It's different, but it was awesome. So, good job. As Ms. Seiberg mentioned, this week is National School Lunch Week, and it's great with the mouth and importance of lunch. The School Nutrition Association states approximately 30 million students are served healthy lunches every school day. And for some of these students, maybe they're only healthy meal of the day. As part of National School Lunch Week, I was honored to be served lunch earlier today at Metz. I want to thank Ms. Buckhite, Ms. Richmond of the Food Services, and Ms. Hartford, who invited us. And one thing that really struck me was I've been in schools. My dad was a school teacher for 40 years. I've been with him to lunch as a kid and watching the interaction between the staff, the cafeteria staff, and the students. Because oftentimes, kids just go through the lines and, you know, they may have a bad day or whatever, but the staff there, without fail, always said something kind to the students that walked through. Not something that we don't see, but that's something that's really important. So thank them for what they're doing with their kids. Finally, to, not as late, no. I have some personal observations that I kind of feel compelled to share. These are my thoughts, so just want to preface by saying that. It's a challenge for me sometimes to decide what I should share during these comments. As member of the school board, obviously, anything that's pertinent to schools is appropriate. But occasionally, there are issues which are not school-related per se or even community-related. If I turn the page. But which I believe should be addressed because of their overarching importance in our society. Nobody scares them of that. But we're scared, yeah. This past week, two police officers tragically lost their lives in Southern California. And thousands of patients and as a total, 21 Americans in North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, and Florida, lost their lives to Hurricane Matthew. Each of these locations is a special place in my heart for different reasons. I lived in North Carolina for a bit. I have family in South Carolina. I lived in Georgia. Family in Florida. My wife's family's from Haiti, and my wife and I went there for a mission trip after the earthquake. And this really hit us hard in her parents. And these tragedies merit a lot of attention. I'm glad people mentioned it. But unfortunately, they've been overshadowed by a lot of talk about Lakhon language the past couple days. According to the charity RAINN, there is a sexual assault in the United States every 109 seconds. That's every 109 seconds, a minute and 49 seconds, there's a sexual assault in America. According to their site, approximately 1 out of 6 women and 1 out of 33 men will encounter this issue in their lifetime on a personal level. And these figures are probably undercounts because the crime is frequently not reported. The problem affects many people, even here in our community. It crosses racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic lines. This issue and the correlated issue of sexism are probably need to address. These issues affect our students, our staff, and our community. After many personal discussions the past few days and ubiquity of the issue on media, I want to forcefully, clearly, and ambiguously state that bragging about and insinuating that you have or will commit this crime or committing this crime is wrong. It's abominable, it's reprehensible, and it can't be tolerated in a civilized society. And bragging about such a thing is not Lakhon talk, it's trash. None of the women and women I know talk like that. And there are people who do that need to stop. Some like to use the word thug when referring to outrageous behaviors and actions, but in my opinion, it's true thuggish behavior. And since much of the language that's used in these cases involves women, I think we all should remember that women are not objects or playgrounds and should not be treated as such. America's a light to the world on so many issues, and I urge all of us individually and collectively to consciously work towards a society where half of our population is treated with the respect that they deserve.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Sebeski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank the Bull Run Rotary as well for their generous matching of the grant. As many people know, my children can win the band program, and that's new and dear to me. And so, one of the things that I wanted to also talk about was Osborne had their homecoming last Friday night. And it was so fun to talk with so many of our students, especially the students that are recent alumni who wanted to come back, be part of Friday Night Lights, and I think appreciate Osborne even more and their educations they have gotten here at Manassas City Schools. So, it was great to hear that, to talk with the students. I had the pleasure to do an interview at halftime with a gentleman that was broadcasting the game on the internet because he called it "The Battle of Manassas." And so they looked for somebody who might know Stonewall High School as well as Osborne High School. And the reason I was selected to do this is that my husband and I graduated from Stonewall High School, but yet both of our children graduated from Osborne High School. So, when my kids were at the high school, there'd be times when we'd play over at Stonewall that I'd threaten to wear my O'Learyman's jacket just to get under their nerves. But nonetheless, it was a great night to be able to talk to your neighbors and enjoy the community that we have here in Manassas that not all schools and communities get to have. So, and the kids were just wonderful. So, thank you all for that great opportunity. Two quick notes, because most of my colleagues up here have covered so many of the things that we are so grateful for. And Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October. Please get your mammogram. Breast cancer, wonderful women. So, please take care of yourselves. Realize that you can't take care of others if you don't take care of yourself. The last thing I want to touch on is Bullying Prevention Month. Because I worked with a student about three and a half years ago and wrote the bullying policy that we have here at Manassas City Public Schools. That student, that was new and dear to him, and I really appreciated Leah Marni helping me with that. And I'm very proud that we have a much more in-depth bullying policy than what many school divisions in Virginia have. Bullying cannot be tolerated, and as a society, we need to not tolerate it or accept that behavior. Some might liken it to terrorism because that's how I see it. So, just a brief quote. This comes from Kathleen Patel. It says, "With ignorance comes fear. From fear comes bigotry. Education is the key to acceptance." Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And a special thank you to Mr. Williams for his words that helps somebody on YouTube or one of those kind of media caught and can put on CNN because forceful, strong, and eloquent words that I think our nation should abide by. Homecoming was great. It was a wonderful week. Friday night was fun. How can you go wrong? Friday Night Lights, whatever you want to call it. It looks like the stands are empty till you walk under the stands and go to the snack bar and walk around and realize a large part of the community is there. As Mrs. Sebeski said, in the interest of time, I think a lot of board members cover things. I just do want to put a public service announcement out there for the finance meeting on Thursday. We do start the budget process. At this budget meeting, we'll talk about the CIP, the Capital Investment Plan, the five-year revenue forecast. And that capital planning is important. You know, our enrollment projections continue to increase. When I was first elected to the board 16 years ago, there were board members who said we'll never have to build another school. That was several school additions ago and a school ago. And enrollment projections continue to increase to the point that we will again have to look at capital needs within the next five to seven years. So, that is the kind of real planning this board does. And I encourage the community to come out and see it and get involved. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. It is exciting, the budget meetings.
I didn't say it was exciting.
It's just, you don't want to miss it.
They're exciting to Mr. Albrecht.
They are. I'm a geek. Couple things I want to touch on. Bullying Prevention Month. We've got elections going on right now. And we have 15 people running for seats in the city of Manassas. And I can truly say, we have 15 good people running. And it's really nice to be involved with local elections to where everybody, everyone is a good person. And I'd just like to thank all of those people because it is so much more enjoyable than state or national elections. As far as bully prevention goes, there's a lot of bullying going on in the national election. Mr. Williams touched on it. And not only do we want to prevent bullying, I'd like to go the other way. Just be nice to everybody. Be respectful to everybody. Whether you're a man or a woman or whatever your nationality, your ethnic, Whether you're a man or a woman, or whatever your nationality, your ethnic, just be nice to people and bullying will go away. And it's really frustrating to see the things we're seeing right now. That's why it's nice to be involved, not involved, thankfully I'm not running for anything, to be a part of and watching the local election. Because you all that are running are doing a fine job and I appreciate it very much. Thank you. And my computer turned off. So, citizens comments. Mr. Hawkins, do I have anybody signed up?
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay, thank you very much. And the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, move the school board to the city of Manassas, adopt the consent agenda as modified.
Second. Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Williams, to approve the consent agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Carries six zero. All right. Discussion, we're going to go to student achievement, Metz Middle School. Ms. Puckett.
Good evening, Chairman Mary, members of the board. Actually, Ms. Bittar and I are here tonight to present to you our annual overview of progress from last year at Metz Middle School. So, to start with, we really want to celebrate a host of new programs and events and things that happened at Metz last year. All of our students, or all of our teachers, 100% participated in blended learning training over the course of the year through our RTTS person. And of the entire student, or teaching staff, 20 of them have volunteered to participate in the Summer Better Lessons Program, which is really a three-day course that they're giving up summertime to come in and really look at how to integrate technology into their classrooms. So, they're to be commended for that time. Last year was our first year that we implemented the AVID program at Metz and it went incredibly well. We continue to have really high participation rates this year for students really volunteering and being a part of that program. And we'll talk in a bit about how that's part of the Global Studies Academy as well. We worked really closely with both Mayfield and Osborn last year to increase our transition programming. So, there were several additional visits for incoming seventh grade students to be at Metz, exploring the hallways even prior to then the traditional transition in the fall. So, we were excited and got good feedback about that. In addition to our regular population, we even had more transition opportunities for our special education students because we know they need just a little more attention and a little more time to make that smooth transition. Last year was huge and we've talked a couple of times about planning for the implementation of level practices and the new structures that have started this year with our academies. So, that was a real celebration that the work we did last year was able, allowed us to really get off the ground running pretty smoothly this year. And I'll speak to that a little bit later in the presentation as well. We had exemplary ratings for all of our music programs. Band, orchestra, chorus continue to do exceptionally well. And we're excited about the grant, the additional funding to be able to purchase some more instruments to give those students who may not have access to the program those same opportunities. Community service projects. So, we had roughly 42 eighth grade students do some pretty amazing community service projects last year and you may have seen some of that in the local news. We had one group of three kids raise over $1,000 for the local animal shelter. A group did a collection of baby items that they were able to pass on to families in need. So, there were just some really great ideas that they generated as a way of giving back to the community. We opened our family center and began the ESOL advisory program, which we continue, we will continue this year. So, that was a huge plus in bringing consistently really 30 of our Spanish-speaking families to building. And actually, I don't have on the list and I should have put it there, but our second breakfast program started a little rocky last year as we tweaked and staff were great about working with the nuances of how that was going to be implemented, but continues to be happening this year and we continue to have over 300 kids eating breakfast through that offering as well. So, I'm going to let Ms. Bittar talk to you about our academic results for last year.
Okay, so we're going to look at the next few slides to look at our standards of learning assessments and how we've done since 2012, 2013. The first slide you're looking at is the pass rates by subject and want to highlight the gains we've made in science and in our history scores. We move to the next slide is our reading pass rates by subgroups and the green highlight is showing where we've had growth and in particular, I want to note the growth in gap group three where we had increases there. And unlimited English proficiency in our white scores. And then for our next slide, please. Math pass rates by subgroups. Again, you can see where the green highlighted areas are. We have also, I'm remaining pretty constant with our math scores with no significant decreases over the past few years. And then this slide shows our pass rates by our SOL test, all the SOL tests that we administer. So, in the middle school, we administer nine content tests to our students. The eighth graders take five of those content tests. And our math scores are actually comprised of four math, four math SOL tests. And then again, I just want to note the gains we've made in our science and our history areas of SOL assessments.
So, switching over to the PDF document for our balance scorecard. So, the student achievement data that's reflected on the balance scorecard that Courtney didn't just speak to are really the pass advanced rate. So, in that second section there. We have not met any of our goals with regard to pass advanced. One of the things that we're really focusing on and we'll speak to this a little bit with the reconstitution plan and some other things in a moment, is the rigor in our classrooms and really higher order thinking. So, doing a lot of professional development with our staff about ways that they really increase the complexity of questions they're asking and tasks they're giving kids to do, which really we're feeling confident will reflect some significant gains in those particular areas this next year. So, hopefully when we're speaking to you next year, we can celebrate that. All of our students participated in the STEM Career Awareness Program, thanks to Ms. Busherod who did a great job organizing that event this last year, which allowed us to hit that target. While we didn't meet the next two targets on that balance scorecard, there's still some room for celebration. So, the staff attendance rate increased nicely, didn't hit our target again, but we're feeling really good about teachers being committed to students and being at school every day. And then in particular, we had some really nice growth in the retention rate. So, 84% in the 2014-15 school year to 90% this past year, which again, I think really reflects the commitment of Metz staff to being part of the change that's happening there. All right, and then on the second page of our scorecard, some data points that I really want folks to kind of look to. The high participation rate in our overall school-wide events, the thing that really brings that number up is our music program. So, the many concerts that we have, orchestra, chorus and band, we always get a large crowd for those events, which is what allows us to kind of be within that range. Our parent teacher conference participation, we were at 53%. We're feeling really good about that number being much higher next year. So, with the new structures and reorganizations with the teams, those teams are really committed to making sure they're meeting with all the course of the year, in the course of this first semester, kind of the parent of all of our students. The number of students participating in fine arts programs grew significantly last year and that's really attributed to, we added a second visual art teacher. So, we have two visual art teachers and those programs are busting at the seams. And we also added a new program. So, we added the performing art program last year that was very successful. We had a lovely little drama production at the end of the year, guys and dolls, and are continuing to look forward to really growing that program and making that in the extracurricular activity for kids as well. And then as I did state a little bit earlier, so the number of teachers participating in the blended learning was really 100%. So, there's really several areas of strength that I think the staff at Metz Middle School need to be commended for. So, again, in particular, their attendance and the retention rate from the previous year, all of that allows us to continue to advance the message and the kind of power of what we can do at Metz and within Manassas City. We completed all of that planning that allowed us to move forward with our academies. Our science and social studies pass rates, we're really pretty excited about. That history pass rate is probably among the best. When I go to DOE meetings, folks are kind of envious if we have the opportunity to talk about our history scores. Areas that we know we need to grow and improve in, in particular, our grade eight literacy. So, writing and grammar, we know our competencies that day one of grade seven, we have to start working on and building on. If you see a Metz English teacher, give them a hug because they are really, really working hard and feeling the pressure to get things done this year. And I think the wonderful thing that I see is they've got a lot of support from their teammates. So, although it's a lot of pressure for them, they are getting support from other members of their academy teams to help them, to help them do that well. So, grade eight reading, we know is again, another area that they're really doing some work that has to be done this year. Math areas of concern include the performance of our students with limited English proficiency and our students with disabilities. Those are areas that continue to be relatively low, that we always need to be really mindful of and be paying close attention to those students. So, good news. If you recall, in June, I presented to everybody on the reconstitution plan and we received word today that our plan was accepted by the State Department of Education. So, we are officially a reconstituted school. In this slide, I've presented, I've given you the six overarching focus areas that were from that plan and just a little bit of where we are within each of those areas. So, focus area one, related again to the academies applying implementation, the restructure. That's well underway. In a few slides, I'm going to give you some specifics about how some of those academies are kind of working and some things that are happening there. Focus area number two, our instructional framework. So, we're in year three of our LFS implementation and again, really focusing on rigor and higher order thinking, how we differentiate in our classrooms to ensure that's happening. Goal three, our reading instruction. At the very beginning of the year, in August, all staff, even our elective staff participated in vocabulary development. So, we look at how they're reinforcing new vocabulary words to kids everywhere, art, music, PE, as well as the English, math, social studies and science classes. Writing and grammar instruction. So, students are doing daily oral language practices in their English class. So, every day, 10 to 15 minutes, they're actually doing some grammar instruction. Number five, our response to intervention. So, we were able to, with the wonderful support of our central office folks, as well as you, school board members, to add the Apex Online Program for all of our students. So, all of our students are going to have access to English and math tutorial, additional enrichment, homework practice with that Apex Program that will be during the school day as well as at home as an opportunity for them. And we were able to add for our most needy kids that are really struggling with reading, the leveled literacy intervention program, which is really for what we call our tier three, our most needy students. And last one was family engagement. So, we had our October 6th literacy event last week where we really were teaching parents how to use the Apex Program and how doing that at home is going to really help foster improvement for their particular students. And our parent conferences, we had wonderful attendance at those and that was again, teachers calling home and making sure that parents knew about the opportunity and getting them scheduled even to the moment of like calling that day and saying, can you come right now and be here? I'm here, you're not. All right, so the next slide we're going to just look at, so what we've done is taken our school improvement plan and really done a comparison to the reconstitution plan for folks to see how the two are kind of working together. So, our staff worked this summer to develop school improvement plan. Goal one really relates to student achievement and it really is kind of a side-by-side of those reconstitution focus areas. So, in particular, some of the strategies, again, our teaming structure, professional training for staff, increase our RTI options and increase parent involvement. I've actually kind of spoken to each of those, so. So, our academies of learning. Going to, so if I introduce, you have in the first bullet point, the name of each of them, you'll become, as the years go on, staff are becoming much more familiar with them and able to kind of rattle them off too. But just a couple of what's, a couple of things that are happening within each. So, STEM Academy next week has a trip, kids are going to Lockheed Martin. The day has been organized to really be a wonderful experience. So, they're actually doing stations where they're going to get to do some engineering design things at Lockheed Martin and then also do interviews with the professionals from there. So, talking about the career choices those folks made and the pathway to get there. The environmental cohort of the STEM Academy received the very first school grant from the Virginia Cooperative Extension. So, they received roughly $1,500 to actually begin our garden, what we hope to have grow over time at Metz. The students worked alongside members of master gardeners to actually create the planting bed. And tomorrow after school, students will be planting a native perennial garden. So, if you want to come and dig a hole and place a plant, you are welcome to do that. We go 2:30 and 3:30 tomorrow.
What, is that 2:30, 3:30?
You come dig a hole.
Yeah.
Our technology, our technology and innovation academy is going to be attending the Chamber Theater Encore show later in the year at the Hilton Performing Arts Center. And probably even more exciting for me anyway, in November, they're going to start designing personal, their own personal mobile phone applications. So, they're going to start dabbling in the field of developing an app in November. So, they're working closely with Mr. Hernandez from, Pedro from Central Office, who's kind of helping them really build that out. The Culture Humanities Academy has successfully gotten underway the grade seven integrated humanities program, going very well. And then today, they actually went to the Hilton Center for the Big Sky Project performance that focused on differences in people and celebrating the differences. So, teachers came back having, I think, spent the afternoon crying, is what they told me. And then our Global Studies Academy is where our AVID program is at and the successful thing there is that they've taken those AVID strategies and infused them across the entire day. So, in every class that kids go to, the organizational structures and the whole program of AVID is happening everywhere for them. So, each of these academies are working together to create a learning experience that extends beyond individual classroom walls, allowing for the integration of subjects. You were recently forwarded the school safety plan, which really capitalizes upon these new structures to allow for adults who know the students' names to be able to provide or supervision to students in the classrooms. The other big thing that has happened and some of you have, and if you haven't been to visit yet, come and walk the hallways with me for, give me a half hour so I can kind of show you and explain. But the students' classrooms are really right next to each other. So, there are by far less transitions across the school building. They're really moving within a small geographic area with the exception of when they go to their elective gym, PE, music classes. So, that, that limiting of transitions and being smarter about how we have kids moving in hallways has been a huge part of really making Metz a very different place this year. We have bells to start the day and to end the day, but we don't have bells that interrupt the learning over the course of the day. And really what this has allowed for is really honestly, the faster and smoother transitions of kids. There's more a sense of urgency and teachers give that sense of urgency like, huh, we've got to get to the flex class, we've got to get going. So, it's not a matter of lingering in the hallway for three or four minutes until the bell rings. It's really a matter of, I leave one room, I get to the next room quickly and I get started. The other thing it really allows for is some instructional flexibility within the academy. So, academies can have that choice if they want to on a particular day, extend a learning block and maybe do some combined social studies and science together or math and science type things. And it also, I'm just a really big believer, it allows for that flow of learning. So, the brain continues to learn regardless of the environment they're moving into. All right, our second school improvement goal really relates to students and their kind of sense of belonging and commitment to Metz. So, if you recall, in the spring, we administered what is called a student voice survey and we're really focusing in this goal on that first element of school culture, which is called belonging. So, there are eight conditions within that belonging. There are eight questions inside of belonging. And there were five particular questions that we really had some pretty low scores. So, this goal is really, when we administer that again in the springtime, we're looking at an increase. We want kids, and I'm really feeling great about this again, because the academies allows them to be part of the family, part of the community, to be committed to Metz and being a part of the Metz community. So, some of the strategies that really relate to this is doing student-led conferences in the spring. The monthly student-parent orientations. So, we tried to do this last year, we were going to do it on a daily basis, like as a new parent came in, try to orient them and we just weren't able to do that. So, this year, we've adapted somewhat and are looking at doing a once a month, almost imagine like a breakfast or lunch, that we invite our new families to come into, we feed them, we give them a little overview and orientation to Metz Middle School and for some families to just American School even. So, really kind of building that in to help them become part of the community. Our weekly student advisory is critical. So, we're looking at 40 minutes a week where kids are just working in a small group on things like our anti-bully lessons, becoming a part of the community, things like our community service projects can really happen there too. And then the last one is really continuing to implement our restorative justice practices as we go through time. So, here in this slide, I've really listed out, and this was, a lot of this actually was part of that school safety plan that you guys got as well. But I just, I want to really emphasize within this list that it's not any one single item on this list. It's really the cohesive practice. So, it's every teacher and staff member and every program and every strategy working together to create a really healthy learning environment for our students. So, to have, just to say it's just one of those things that makes a difference, it's really not. It's a cohesive package, package of all of that. And I'm Stan, I'm going to have the pleasure of reporting to you all quarterly on changes that are happening at Metz Middle School over the course of the year. So, I'm looking forward to that. This chart will expand as we meet during time, but what we're doing, what we will be doing is really comparing last year at this point, so in each month, last year's physical altercations with current, where we are. So, in the month of September last year, we had had one incident and then this year, we had one incident. So, actually, the incident this year, September 7th, was the last incident we had. It was a spontaneous altercation between two boys to start the day. That really has been the only physical altercation that we have dealt with at this point in time in the year. And we're really confident about that. We have a host of stu-, I mean, there are teachers everywhere and as I, I mean, we've got 43, we counted for the safety plan for you. There are 43 teachers start the day, 43 teachers to end the day. There are teachers everywhere at every transition point. It's really hard for me to imagine that we're not seeing things if they're going on. We haven't had students reporting, I mean, the reports I've been getting from parents, the conversations I've had, is that it does, it feels different and that kids are happy. They're coming, they're leaving the house happy to go to school and they're coming home happy to have been at school. So, I'm really, am feeling confident and really want to recognize the staff and students of Metz Middle School this year for making a different Metz and really starting us on that pathway of building a new future for Metz Middle School. And lastly, our, so kind of our tagline, our slogan really is, and if you have time to understand our students, the strength of character that our kids come to us with is amazing. The stories that they often have to share as individuals and what they're overcoming to be successful young men and women is amazing. So, you know, I am always moved, the strength of character every day that they bring makes me proud. And, and I know that we're moving and we're creating excellence in learning for those students every day. And the staff really need to be commended for the hard work to make that happen. So, thank you. Questions?
Thank you very much. I'm going to start with one. I'm going to start with one. We had a candidate's forum with those 15 wonderful people I was speaking of, I guess only 14 were there. And they had questions from the audience. And a lot of the questions seemed to be based around the safety at Metz. And they said that, you know, there was still fighting going on and stuff like that. I'm not, God bless you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure, I don't do that when you're talking. That, and I'm not sure if it's a residual from years past, but from what you say there, it seems to me that you've taken inroads to stopping that and keeping the kids safe.
Yeah, I mean, and I'll be totally honest with you. I mean, it was hard to miss events when they happened last year. Because for whatever reason, it's a strange phenomenon, but the kids have a tendency to rush towards these things. So you can't really miss the crowd of students moving quickly to a particular area, and there's noise. You know, in, you know, 95% of those incidents last year, there's noise. So that's what I think just, so, and I puzzled through a lot of this last year and continue to, in terms of where those, where that perception continues to come from, or how we help to dispel. You know, because what can be disheartening is, again, that, you know, the staff and the kids there are working so hard and are making it a new place. And it's a great place to be. And, and how do we make sure people are hearing that message and perpetuating that message that, that, you know, our, our school is, is safe, and is a wonderful place to learn. And there are hardworking staff who, who are doing the very best, you know, 10, 12-hour days and 50, 60-hour work weeks to, to make sure kids are learning. So I, I'm not sure, to be very honest. I, I don't believe any of that's going on, and I find it hard to believe that we're missing that. Again, with 110 cameras, with, you know, the volume and the nature of how things, with the volume of teachers that we have interacting with kids and being in the hallways all the time. So, I mean, I think one of the things maybe for us to think about is, do we talk to kids about, so what are they going home and saying? It'd be interesting to see.
It seems like once that bell is rung, so to speak, I didn't mean to be a school thing there. But once you ring a bell, it's hard to unring it. And that may be where we are right now. I applaud your efforts at it. And it's just like everything that we try to do here is communication. It's really hard to pound it into people that this is what, not, again, no pun, that this is what's going on. And it, it, you just have to keep putting that message out there, and hopefully, we can turn the tide of perception, because I don't think perception is reality in this point, in this, in this case. Okay, Mr. Aubrey?
Thank you. I want to reinforce what Mr. Di Maria said, because having been to a couple of candidate forums since, I have the pleasure of trying to run for reelection. The number one item at every forum is Metz Middle School, whether it's the fact that it is our only school that's not accredited, or the, I'll say perception, but the belief that it is a troubled, violent school. So I want to believe you, I want to have confidence we have it, but we have a lot of members of this community that haven't drank the Kool-Aid yet, so we have to prove it to them. Two questions I had, one going back, I think it was Chart Six. You mentioned reading was a specific area that you wanted to focus on.
Mm-hmm.
And it's really, you know, figures don't lie. The cohort of seven to eight, over this four-year span, didn't gain, they lost nine points. We have a problem in grade eight reading.
Agreed.
The other data point, as I was looking at it on Charts Four and Five, in your summary, you never mentioned Gap Group Two, but they had the lowest gain of anybody consistently.
Over the four years?
Over the four years. And they are getting left behind. And it didn't make the summary.
Sorry. Noted.
And one other thing I meant to say, but I start rambling on, and I forget what I wanted to say. A big point that I've made in other schools is the, you have family engagement on there, and then you also had the monthly student-parent orientation. I think that's huge. The parents have to be involved. And, you know, you were, I think you were at 53% of conferences. And I like the fact that you've got a plan to raise that. And as I've said in other meetings, it keeps going down as these kids get older. But we've got to try and stop that, because, you know, everybody's involved with their elementary school kids, and then it starts to dwindle. But it seems to me, what I've learned over the last few years, is that the middle school kid needs as much help as anybody, if not more. It's a tough time. So I applaud you for doing those things, to try and get the parents in the building and involved in their children's education. And have the parents reiterate to the children how important education is, because hopefully, coming from the parents means more than coming from anybody else. So I appreciate that. Anyone else? Did you have some? Anyone?
I do, I do.
All right.
Thank you. I was very excited last year when you opened up the Education Visitor Center for the parents, and to see the engagement you've had there, that is key, because perception is reality. And if we're going to ever change the perception, we have to make sure people are coming in and seeing what you've described. I do think that our teachers see and talk with our students the most, and probably with our parents the most. And again, if we're going to change the perception, there needs to be discussion of them being proud of the school that they're at, and proud of the work that they're doing. We're proud of that work, but that perception needs to get changed. And so, they've already said it, we've heard it repeatedly, if it's indeed not happening, and no one wants to not believe that, I agree that it'd be kind of hard with 110 cameras and the way those students typically gather for things not to know. But, you know, we've got, either stop those rumors by people taking that responsibility to say, I'm proud of this, and we're not going to, I'm a student, I'm not going to let those rumors be told, or as a person that works in that building to say, no, this is a great place. And I think the majority of that is the case. But unfortunately, it only takes one or two people to not think positively about that school to be able to make things go viral. So thank you for coming tonight, presenting to us. Thank you for the work that you're trying to put in place to make the changes that we know are important to be made there.
Thank you. You're good. Osborne High School, Ms. Benner.
Good evening, Chair Di Maria, Vice Chair Aubrey, members of the school board, Dr. McGork, and the most important board member, Faith Maddick. It's my pleasure to talk to you about the work that we did last year, and also outline a plan going forward. So this is our achievement data from 16, 15, 16, moving forward. And so we're going to start with some celebrations, and you can see that it's a very long list. Last year, we had the Washington Post Teacher of the Year, Sarah Weaver, the National Business Teacher of the Year, Robin Aubrey. We earned, for the first time in the history of Osborne High School, the Silver Medal Status by U.S. News and World Report for America's Best High Schools in 2016, which in my mind is just an enormous feather in the cap for Osborne. Our Student Council earned the 2016 National Gold Council of Excellence Award by the National Association of Student Councils. It's well deserved, and it was based mainly on the number of hours they committed to community and school projects. We also had our second, since I've been there, our second Gates Millennial Scholar, Ms. Jeanette Thupsootsmoot, who is going to be honored this week by the governor. Our class of 2016 earned $2.1 million in scholarship money. It was an all-time high for Osborne. 100% of our AVID seniors were admitted into their first-choice four-year colleges. We increased dual enrollment opportunities from two courses, English 12 and Government, to four courses by adding AutoTech and Accounting. Our marching band earned superior ratings in four band competition festivals. We had a lot of positive press last year. We were on TV twice. We're BFFs with Channel Four. They covered our Homecoming King story last year, as well as our first senior walk. Our service groups such as CCN, CAA, and Interact assisted with multiple community projects, and I got many, many comments from community members about how wonderful Osborne students are and how they appreciated their hard work on behalf of this community. We were guests at the White House twice. The first time was, our students got to hang out with the cast of Hamilton. The second time was that we were the guest of Michelle Obama to attend a Jazz Clinic and Festival. And we celebrated our first OHS Multicultural Night and our first Community Resource Fair. So the next slides deal with our achievement data from last year, and it is based on data collected since 2012. And the green does indicate the pass rate met or exceeded the previous school year. So interestingly enough, for those of you who've been following the Metz data, you see that Osborne had a flipped situation with our reading and writing data. So there is groundwork being laid at Metz that we are able to capitalize on and move forward with. Our mathematics scores, I think the telling thing there is if you look at the difference from 2012 to 2016. There are very few schools, high schools, in an urban center that can boast across the state that they've had a 27-point gain since 2012. And I don't care how low their first scores were. That's an amazing testament to a lot of heavy lifting by amazing teachers. Science gain of three over the fourth, and I can talk to you more about that in a minute, but three over the past four years, and then our history scores, which are very modest gains, and we went, in fact, backwards last year. Our reading rates, our reading pass rates by subgroups, I think is a little telling also. Because again, to Mr. Aubrey's question for Metz last time, he was focusing on the Gap Group Two, and you'll note that something works out for them in high school. And we are able to, I think, boast about some of the gains that we have made for that particular gap group. And all of our students showed, you know, progress, but none more so than our students with disabilities and our Gap Group Two in reading. Again, one of the things that I'm most proud about with Osborne High School is the amazing achievement that this, this school has made in math. All of our students over a four-year period of time have shown a positive difference of 27 points. And if you look at our gap groups, it almost defies belief. 30 points for economically disadvantaged subgroup, Gap Group One, 29 points, Gap Group Two, 28 points, Gap Group Three, 30 points. Our LEP students, 21 points. And I credit this a lot to Dr. McGork's paradigm, that we would double-block math, as well as a lot of the professional development. We provided outstanding teachers. And the fact that we, we have school on Saturdays, we have school after school, they, we sort of haunt children with math. And it pays off. You can see that it has paid off. Pass rates by SOL test, so there's two different things you, I'd like for you to look at. One is the, just the regular green number, that is, that shows the pass rate met or exceeded the previous school year. But if it appears in bold, it means that it passed or met or exceeded the state rate. And so, again, I feel like we have got some very, a lot of things to be very proud of. None more so than Algebra II. Again, I challenge our viewing audience and educators around the state to find any school that has made 51-point gain over time, over the past four-year period of time. We know that we've got some, we've got some concerns about biology. We also have some concerns about earth science. Those are very vocabulary-laden tests, and we are trying to figure out a way to chunk vocabulary to make it more manageable for our ninth and 10th graders that are typically the ones that are taking those tests. So the balanced scorecard, like Metz, like Ms. Buckhite said, we have only met one of our goals, we haven't met the targets. However, we are in striking distance of many of them. This, to me, is always sort of like New Year's. That's how I feel about this, because it's when you make your resolutions. And it's a very humbling thing to look at data. So the first thing we're doing as a staff is we are absolutely sitting on top of this data and getting in the mud with it. Because teachers need to understand what our targets are and where we are with meeting those targets. So what we, Mr. Lyon and I talked a lot many times about this data, and we made some choices that, in some cases, we were going to keep our targets the same if we had not met them, because we felt like they were realistic targets, and we needed to continue moving towards that end, that number. But in some cases, if the state target was significantly higher or higher, and we felt like it was something that was a good goal for this, this school to move towards, we actually increased the target even though we had not met, met it this year. So if I may, just go through the things that I think are most significant, and then if you have some questions, please feel free to ask me at the end of this. 100% of our students participated in career awareness events last year because of our, our push for novants and our push for them to commit to a career track. And so they all had exposure to multiple career awareness events and programs. Our instructional staff attendance rate, again, it's 1% away from our, I'm sorry. Yes, it's 1% away from our target. And we did some incentives last year for teachers who tended to come to school consistently, and a lot of that was just recognition of teachers who were continually present. Our student attendance, we feel like we are always fighting some, you know, this uphill battle to get them to school on time. But they have done much, much better since we changed school times a couple of years ago. I have some data back at school to show you if you're interested. And again, we're incentivizing some of the attendance for students. The on-time graduation rate is something that I do want to talk to you about. If you'll notice, not only did we not meet our target, we actually went down. That cohort was 555 students from their ninth-grade year to their senior year. 48 students did not graduate last year, and that affects your OGR, as well as your dropout rate. So if you look at our dropout rate, it also increased from 7.7% to 8.6%. And it is those 48 students. I could discuss that with you, I mean, I could discuss them with you, because we have worked child by child through that list. But, but I would like to say to you is that we are putting things in place that we feel will prevent our numbers from going up, and will in fact encourage them to go back down. And that is some, some things that we're putting into place for their senior year. All of my assistant principals and deans are acting as graduation coaches this year, along with their counselors. But the biggest thing is the freshman academy, which has been described to you before. Because we are trying to front-load a lot of interventions to make sure that kids stay on target. Because the one compelling factor of these 48 kids is that many of them felt that they weren't within striking distance of graduation, for a variety of reasons. So our goal is to monitor these, monitor their progress and have multiple interventions, whether it's behavior interventions, whether it's attendance interventions, or whether it's academic interventions for them throughout the course of their time at Osborne. We are excited about our CTE completers. They increased from 147 to 201. And we're really excited just about the destiny of our CTE program in general. And we are very close to our percent of students taking AP tests scoring three, three or better. We are still not within the state rate, but we're going to get there. We have, I think, we've met several times with our AP students and teachers this year to make sure that we are all on the same page about what's the expectation. to make sure that we are all on the same page about what the expectations are. I think we'll just go on if you don't mind. Again, this is sort of dedicated to Mr. DiMaria, because I can remember last year having this conversation with you about parent engagement at the high school. One of the things that happens at high school is that parents become more stratified around their student interest. So PTSA does not resonate the same way at a high school that it does in an elementary school, and that is not to say that parents aren't engaged, they are. But they're serving as band boosters, or they're serving as coral boosters, or they're working with robotics, or they're working with athletic boosters. They are following, they're taking the lead from their kids. So the PTSA actual involvement might be small, but when we send out a call for help, or a call for support, or a call for involvement, or if we ask them their opinion through survey, we get an enormous response. So I just don't want anyone to think that the parents of Osborne are slackers, because they're not. They work really, really hard. They just work in different ways than they would probably in the earlier grades. I asked Dave Lyon if I could say, on the average number of parents participating in a school-wide event, I asked him if I could use graduation, and he told me I couldn't, because it is a very well-attended event. But typically, a lot of our other events, a lot of our music programs, and a lot of our theater programs, we have very good turnout. And that's an average. Some of them are much higher than others, but I do feel like we have a lot of parent support for the things that our kids do after school. Our parent-teacher conference participation rate, last year was the first time I felt like we really had some solid numbers, that we weren't duplicating counts, you know, that teachers weren't counting the same parents, because they had visited more than one class. It's difficult to get a parent-teacher conference rate. This year, I feel like we are much more on top of it, and so with the most recent parent-teacher conference rates, we were almost near 65%. So we feel like we really, you know, annoyed parents probably and reminded them multiple times that this event was coming, and teachers reached out to parents. So we feel like we're moving in the right direction. Our student extracurricular participation rate, 31%. Our goal was 50%. We are going to start holding club and activity days during the day. Some of our children work after school, or they're involved in sports that are not school sports, they're involved in club sports elsewhere, that they have a hard time being as involved as we'd like them to be. So we're going to start to try to redesign our club events so that there's some time during the day that they can participate. And we keep hammering away at school business partnerships. Paul Steiner, the director of CTE at Osborne, he has got a lot of people almost willing, I mean, almost ready to sign on the dotted line. I feel like this number will definitely meet and exceed our target for next year. And we are, we have actually blended learning coming in on Thursday, and we have several teachers signed up, so that number will continue to increase as well. So our areas of strength in four of our end-of-course S.O.L. tests, we met or exceeded the state average: chemistry, Algebra II, geometry, and geography. Three subgroups experienced double-digit gains in reading since 2013. Eight subgroups experienced double-digit gains in math since 2013. And our CTE completers increased from 147 to 201. But we have areas of improvement. We need to reduce our dropout rate, which goes hand-in-hand with the on-time graduation rate, the OGR rate. And we want to increase our S.O.L. performance in Algebra I, Earth Science, Biology, U.S. History, and World History I. I actually would throw World History II in there as well. So we have some improvement goals. Again, you know, the student pass rate will exceed the overall state average, including the state average for each subgroup. The percentage of students earning a three or better on AP tests will meet or exceed 47%. That is not the state average. The state average is closer to 60%, but we're going to take small but significant strides towards that goal. The number of CTE completers will increase by 20%, which is about 40 students. Mr. Steiner and I looked at numbers and kids that are enrolled. We feel like that's a very reasonable goal for this coming year. And the OGR will meet or exceed 89% for this year. And I think that's it.
Thank you very much.
Questions?
Do you have any, Mr. Albrecht?
We have thoughts and questions. My first, as I listen to the presentation, I think of a book, Good to Great. We have good results, we want great results, and that's what you're trying to get, and I think our challenge is to sustain and institutionalize these successes and then start leveraging and capitalizing on them. And you talked about on-time graduation rate and CTE and AP. And I think AP, I think, Mr. Williams, we've had this philosophical discussion because of a regional journalist who insists upon counting number of AP tests taken as success, whether or not a child passes or not. And we've always maintained his number of tests passed, so I'm glad to see that. Same with CTE. I mean, we can graduate children. We will prepare them for life if we graduate them with the career and workforce skills they need, so they can go to the job line and not the unemployment line. And that's what will really make us great. So I think we're on the right track, and I thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Sebeski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. It's always good to hear what's going on in our schools, and you get to highlight for the K-12. I'm glad to hear that, I think, the freshman academy having some focus again directly impacts those on-time graduation rates. So I'm glad to hear that we're going to concentrate at that level versus waiting until they get to the senior year, but I'm glad that we're going to try to still take care of that while we wait for these freshmen to become seniors. I guess part of looking at that, the parent-teacher conference rate and the potential reflection it has in our extracurricular participation. When we look at extracurricular participation and those numbers, are we double-counting kids that are participating like in SGA and sports? Or are we looking at the whole student body, and if they participate, how many participate as a whole?
That's a great question. It's per child. So that's the percentage of students that are involved in extracurricular activity. They can be involved in more than one, but, so that's the percentage.
It's a non-duplicate of at least one.
Of at least one.
So in asking that, when it comes to those extracurricular activities, it seems to me, and I'm an adult, so what do I know? Maybe Faith should ask this question. It has to be something that the kids are interested in. We could provide them with 500 opportunities, and if it's something that none of them are interested in, it really wouldn't matter what we offer. And the reason I say it is I know that there's many opportunities up at the high school for the kids. There are many clubs, as well as sports, that they can participate in. What is the thought of engaging the kids and determining what those activities might be that would be determined worthwhile by them to participate in?
So that's a really good, great question, because we, there are always some archaic clubs. Brings to mind a comedian who said, "I was in the French club. We didn't really have much to do. Every now and then, we'd go and declare war on the German club." So, I mean, there are really actually, I mean, there's some legitimacy to that. They have multiple opportunities to join clubs that are in existence. There is a process for them to create clubs. In fact, two clubs, two different groups of kids came to me, one through Dr. McGork this week, about clubs that they would like to see either reinvented or to begin. Here's the thing with our kids, though, is I really believe that the main thing you're seeing there in the lower percentage of students involved is time. I don't know if it's his interest, because they know that there's a willingness by us to support anything that they're interested in that's legitimate and good. But I do think it's time. And I think that, I'd like to talk to you after we sort of implement these, you know, day Eagle Block club sessions, to see if there is a shift. And like, Faith may have some comments on that. This is a young lady who has no time because of her commitment to so many school activities. And I think you still, you work, right?
I do.
So a lot of kids, though, are working full-time, and there is just no extra time for them, or they're in charge of brothers and sisters, or there's other things going on. So I want to see how many of them join when they have an opportunity during the day to do that.
That kind of question adds into the next one. You know, we look at AP, CTE, on-time graduation rate. I really think of how much our guidance department is engaging these kids and making sure that the kids are taking classes, but challenge them, because some kids like to float along, you know? And they may not understand what CTE has to offer them, really, if someone doesn't really engage them in a good conversation about that, and what that opportunity for them is by doing CTE. And so I think the same conversation about the clubs, them understanding where those clubs could, the volunteer efforts they might do in Interact Club, might lead them to job opportunities. So I just, I don't know how we're measuring that. I know that wasn't something that we looked at in anything tonight. So that's one of my kind of closing thoughts, is that I know from at least my engagements with many students, is that they're still very literal, and they have to understand the relevance of what we're asking them to do. Some of them don't have any, their families don't have any background to share that with them. So if we don't have other adults that are sharing that with them, then they're not going to understand what they need to do to make that and why that might be relevant. So I'd be curious to know how many conversations, true conversations are happening with our children in the eighth to 11th grade realm, and eighth grade's not yours, Ms. Buckhite, to know, you know, how we're encouraging that for them. So that's just a thought. Thank you very much.
Ms. Maddick?
Thank you. I have a couple of other things I would like to say that, I don't know what I mentioned, but I think we should be celebrating. Also, I wanted to say that our interest in club-wise goes, Iris and I started a book club last year, because that's what we are interested in. All you have to do is be, find an interest and find a teacher to sponsor you, and of course, all the teachers are more than willing, if they know this is what you really want to do. But also, I know that safety is a huge, such a big deal here, and at Osborne, we also have teacher monitors out in every single hallway, so not only, like, there's always someone there watching you, so the hallway, they're safe, and it's impossible to skip class. You can't. So no one's skipping class. And I know that, Ms. Maddick, you always say that you cannot learn if you're not in school, so we always have people making sure that you're in class, actually learning, because if you're skipping class, you're not learning. So I just wanted to say that those are good things that are happening also.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buckhite. Thank you, and to all the other principals. These have been great presentations. There's lots and lots and lots of great things to celebrate, lots of good things going on, and nothing was sugar-coated. We also showed the scorecards. We didn't hit our targets here, 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 and here. It's out there. We have a lot more work to do. And I'm just proud of everybody for realizing that, not just showing the good numbers, because you can make anything look good, but y'all and all the other principals made everything look real. And the work that we have to do, and the work that we have done, and the work that we have done shows that the work that needs to be done can be done and will be done. And I'm very thankful to all of our principals for the good work they've done and their entire staff. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. National Bullying Prevention Month. Dr. Stone?
So good evening, Chairman DiMaria, ladies chairman Albrecht, members of the board, Dr. McGork. As many of you mentioned, October is National Bullying Prevention Month, and that is to increase awareness and also to give our staff and students tools to help prevent bullying and stop it when they see it happening. But each of our schools has planned a variety of activities for our student body, and we wanted to share a little bit of those with you this evening. It starts with our K-12 school counselors. They are implementing our bullying curriculum, bullying prevention curriculum. At the elementary level, if you go into any of our buildings, you can see the large posters that say "Stop, Walk, and Talk." The idea is that students stop, request that the unwanted behavior stop. They walk away, and they find an adult to share that information with, so they can get assistance. As that progresses to the secondary level, we move into the Expect/Respect curriculum piece, where we are adding respect for self and others, and also helping students to become an advocate for themselves and an ally to others when they are seeing that they are experiencing a problem. Other things that are happening in schools, students are taking pledges against bullying that ranges from a simple personal pledge that they take themselves, or if you go to some of our buildings, they have large bulletin boards where students are pledging, where everyone can see that they are against bullying. Some students have reminder pencils that say "Take a Stand Against Bullying." They have bracelets that are being given out that tells them to take a stand against bullying as well and speak up for others. We have morning announcements that are occurring every day to reinforce stories about how to prevent bullying and how to be friends to others. One of the interesting things is that Osborne High School, we have students who are creating vignettes about ways to stop bullying. I'm sure you can view those on the website or their YouTube channel. That was a neat thing for the kids to come up with on their own. But also, as you mentioned, one of the pieces about bullying prevention is really being kind to others. So there's also a focus on how we do that in all of our schools. At the elementary level, some of the things that are happening are kindness chains. As students think of ways to be kind to others, they write it on paper, and then they make paper chains with those, and they're hung around the building so they can see those and be reminded of ways to do that. Writing positive notes to their classmates, things that they notice are positive about others in their classroom. Also, at Mets and Osborne at least, they are encouraging students to sit at different lunch tables. Not always an easy thing to do at middle or high school level, because you're used to this being with your friend group, but they're encouraging them to sit at other tables, but they are also having people there to facilitate conversations between those new groups at lunch tables. So at the high school, it's the seniors who are facilitating those conversations. At Mets, I believe it's parts of the SCA and their counselors who are facilitating those conversations. So if you have time, I know you've been serving lunch, you could stop in and have lunch at a table with some kids. I'm sure they would have a great time talking with you. As it was mentioned, our Mets students in One Academy were also able to participate and, or attend the Production by the Same Sky project, titled Behind the Label presentation. It was an amazing presentation from kids who have overcome all kinds of challenges, but they spoke to the kindness factor and people who have helped them along the way to overcome those challenges. Very moving, and we are hopeful that all of our middle schoolers will be invited next year to see the presentation as well. Some things that you can also do to join us, on October 19th, to signify our unity and standing against bullying, everyone will wear orange. So if you have some orange, you wear it that day, that would be great. And our culminating activity is on October 27th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Mets Middle School. We will be offering the Netsmart Workshop for Parents. This is in collaboration with the Secret Service and the National Missing and Exploited Children, the Center for Missing and Exploited Children. This workshop focuses on online safety and security issues, which include appropriate use of social media, protecting your online identity, working with your children through that process, and also addressing cyberbullying and the things that can happen in that scenario. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Sebeski?
That program on the 27th, I really hope that we will make sure that we're getting that information out to parents. I believe we did something like that, or something similar several years ago at Osborne, and unfortunately, it was like in April, and it was not very well-attended. But I found it extremely helpful, and my children that went with me, and maybe that's what we need to encourage too, were very surprised to find out about how some of that worked and what they could potentially get in trouble for without even realizing it. So, I mean, not that I hope that they were doing that, but you just, I think that it was just really informative, so I really hope that we can get a great turnout for that, because it's a really great way to get that information out there.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Albrecht?
Mr. Chair, I'll move the School Board of the City of Manassas into closed session, pursuant to exemption from open meetings as allowed by Section 2.23711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia 1950, as amended for the following purpose: Discussion of Personnel Matters, P E R S. I didn't put my glass on, I don't know what it says. Matters, PERS, I didn't put my glasses on, I don't know what it says, 1617-0268.
motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Kiefer. At the City of Manassas, School Board, enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.23711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia 1950, as amended for the following purpose: Discussion of Personnel Matter, PERS 1617-0268. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry six-zero. Thank you all for being here. We really appreciate it.